Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and convene the August 15th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. As with every meeting, we'll start off with invocation. If y'all will pray with me, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you give us each and every day. We ask you some guidance this morning as we make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Rankin County. You know the needs in our heart of those out there, our loved ones, friends, and subjects that you provide God love and grace to them. Help the physicians with our healing hands, provide comfort to them during their difficult times. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen. All right, moving on to public comments. Mr. Dave Van, welcome. Come on up.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much for letting me come before you today. Senate Bill 2100 requires myself to come before you at least once a year and give you an annual report and answering questions that you might have about our community mental health services and our community mental health center. Mr. Chairman, can I approach him?
Please, absolutely.
Bring his annual report.
Thank you, sir.
How are you doing? Good. Thank you. To just summarize the economics over the last year, our county contributions have been the same for over 10 years now, and we're not asking for an increase at all. We are begging you not to cut us if at all possible. We're increasing our services, obviously. We're opening 300 or 350 new cases every month. A lot of dynamics that go into those numbers, but as you could see, we could hire probably six new employees with a minimum of a master's degree in a mental health-related field every month if our institutions were putting out the number of employees that we need. So we are overloaded, and we wish we didn't have as much business as we have, but we do. And I think that your employees and your constituents, I hope, can tell you that we are top-tier mental health center, not only in this state, but certainly in this region. And I think the state would also tell you that, and I think that most branches of the federal government would tell you that. I'd put our services up against anybody's and anywhere. I think our sheriff would tell you that, and our chance for clerk when they go to meetings, I think we're the envy of other counties in the state. I think it has to do with our quality of staff members. We have two back here today I'd like to introduce you to, and also the desire to be available 24 hours a day because we understand people don't get sick just 24 hours, eight and five. Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I introduce?
Not at all, please do.
People that'll take the torch and move on with it. It's Mr. Steve Otting and Mr. Mel Craig with Region Aid, and they're the faces behind the message and the numbers here. So I'm just the messenger. And so we beg you not to cut us if at all possible, and we're doing everything we can with the funds that we have. We appreciate what you do give us. It allows us to serve individuals who don't have the ability to pay. I think if you or your constituents ever needed us, that we've been available 24 hours a day, including myself, and regardless of what their ability is to pay for services, whether it be inpatient or outpatient services. And I was just joking with Mr. Bishop, but it is true that most people want to stay away from us until they need our services or somebody in their family needs our services, and so it's important once you know what we do and somebody needs us. And of course, mental illness does not discriminate. So we provide three tracks of those services for the seriously mentally ill and children who have serious emotional disturbances, but also alcohol and drug services, large array of services, inpatient and outpatient services, and services for the developmental disability population, which is the politically correct name for those who have a mental retardation diagnosis. And so again, we served somewhere, I think our annual report, somewhere around 17,000 individuals in the last year, unduplicated, and most of those individuals don't go away. It's not like primary healthcare where you have an x-ray and you can tell when the bone is healed. Most people stay with us forever. Here in the Rankin County area, we have about 161 employees, or we do today. Again, we could hire more if they were out there, and we'll continue to recruit and train the best quality mental health professionals available. You can see also that we spent $9,442,000, $142,000 on our Marquette campus, just our Marquette campus, over the last 12 months. And so your contributions have really been a blessing. We're thankful for you guys. We're thankful for the relationships that we've always had here in Rankin County with the Board of Supervisors, with the sheriff, with Ms. Oster, Craig, everybody here. We've worked together well. I have the good fortune of being the director over of mental health centers in four other counties, and you guys certainly are the cream of the crop when it comes to being able to work with us and each other, and I appreciate that, and I don't tell the other ones that.
You're being recorded, you know that.
Sir.
You're being recorded, you know that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, just don't play it. Yeah, yeah. And if you do play it, that's okay. I'm pretty close to retirement. Yeah, yeah.
We can't let you leave yet.
Well, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
I will say I appreciate the many things I've known that you've been involved with to help people that I'm familiar with, and I think you class act, and thank you for what y'all handled yourself.
Thanks very much.
Everybody that I know has been very pleased with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I'll pass that on to all the folks that work at Region Aid. They like to hear good stories like that.
You're always there. That's the thing. You're always there anytime I've had to call you to try to help somebody. I mean, it's 24/7, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. We had this past year, and Mr. Bishop and I was talking about it, and it's no secret, Chuck put an article in the paper about an issue that we had with the federal government about a program in Simpson County, and it certainly was a hiccup in our operations. But, you know, like I told Jay, I feel like it was a constitutional issue where we were treated unconstitutional. And so whatever that means, but we'll be glad to, or I'll be glad to talk with anybody about any of that anytime, and there's nothing that I know of that forbids me from talking about any of that. And I feel like it was just a situation where one branch of the government asked us to do a program, set the parameters, and paid us for it, and then another branch of the government came back and said, oh, no, you can't do that. By the way, you got to pay us back, which you've already paid all your employees. And so, but we're doing good. We're doing as well as any other mental health center in the state, and as long as we can balance our budget and still serve folks, we're not asking anybody else for any more money. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Dave, we appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Moving on in our public comments, Mr. Dennis Stringer. He is the Sanctuary Homeowners Association. Mr. Stringer, come on up and tell us what you'd like to talk about.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
And I'd like to make a comment as a Christian, and I serve vocationally as a ship pastor at Truett Memorial Baptist and Pearl. My first time to be in this setting, and starting off this meeting with a word of prayer. I am impressed by that. I want to say that. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that. Anyway, we at the Sanctuary subdivision down Highway 18 are requesting, and you have a petition that was signed by most, if not all, of our homeowners. We are requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve for the county road department to install a three-way stop sign at the corner of Sanctuary Drive and Bluebird Cove. We have a problem with speeders in our area. We've had it for a number of years. The county actually has added some speed zone signs on Sanctuary Drive that has not seemed to stop the problem. We just recently had a young man speeding so fast coming through our subdivision that he lost control of his vehicle about a month ago, took out a mailbox, flipped the car, went off the road, hit a tree, completely totaled the vehicle, was able to climb out and try to run away before the sheriff's department got him. And he was, of course, intoxicated. But the problem is, just down the road at that time, were people walking with their children, and it could have been a bad situation. So we would like to request, put up those three-way stop signs, and also, not on the petition, but our request from the Homeowners Association Board is that we put, that the road crew can put, I don't know what you call them, rumble strips or whatever, on the east and west approach on Sanctuary Drive to those three-way stop signs to let people know that there's a stop sign there. The sheriff's department has recommended us, this would be a good idea. They also said that if they're installed, they will try to patrol people and see, at least initially, if there are people that are not obeying the stop sign. But we would hope that that's going to help the traffic slow down some. That's about it.
We appreciate you coming by. That is an issue the county faces, and not just your location, but many of the location. And we'll have an election next year in state legislature. So when the next guy comes knocking on your door next year for a vote, you'd be sure, make sure he understands that's extreme priority for you to get the state legislature to give the county radar, you know, for us to help control the speeding. Now, that's been a big issue. The state legislature just won't allow the counties to have it, the sheriff's departments to have it. So we need to make sure our legislative officials are aware that that's still a high priority for us, when they hear from the voter, they're more apt to actually take, listen to it as opposed to just, you know, lip service. So, but we'll take that under advisement. I'll need to get with the sheriff, not here yet, and again, with his folks, but see if we can't work something out, and we'll be back in touch here soon to see if we can't come up with a solution to your problem.
Okay. Thank you both so much. Can I give you a card with my cellphone number on it? Where you'll have a way to contact me? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments? Ms. Dennis?
That's it.
That's it. We're going to move on to old business. We need to make a slight adjustment to the agenda on old business. We need to add the August 2nd minutes to the agenda. Is there a motion for that? Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Now, here are motions to approve both August 2nd and August the 2nd, 6th and 2nd. Motion, Mr. Harris, the 2nd, and Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop, 2nd. Mr. Cross, oh, Ms. Gaines, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Ms. Solomon.
I may petition change the assessment to 2017 real and personal property assessments.
The move.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, 2nd, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Next, please.
I'm B void tax sale, the pin number 16431, and issue a new tax bill.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, 2nd, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Next, please.
I don't see request approval for certain home state exemption accounts from the 2017 home state exemption deletion file.
The move.
That's Mr. Morrison, 2nd, by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Bridget.
I don't hear Harrison voting back there, but I think he gets in every now and then.
Have you got a microphone in front of him?
You gave him a motion a minute ago. You gave Mr. Harrison a motion.
Oh, did I?
Yeah. Hey, I agree. You should vote.
That's all right. We got the right person covered over there.
He's actually the most powerful man in Rankin County, so I mean, he should have a vote.
That's what you was going on.
Harrison looked over at him and said, I told you I run this thing. I told you I got this. I'm voting from back here.
All right, Ms. Bridget.
Good morning.
That's right. He's got to vote.
This morning, I'm requesting authority to advertise this for the unit system for asphalt, scrub, slurry, and micro-surfacing, crush aggregates, gravel, metal culverts, and polypropylene culverts. These are the six items that we did get exempted from the reverse auction for.
Is there a motion? To approve this for?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Was there anything we asked for that didn't get exempted?
No. These are the only six that we did ask for, and we approved for all of them. We have some other annual supplies that we did not, that we weren't required to, the traffic striping, traffic application. There's a few others.
We basically asked for them, and then they wrote us back and said, you don't have to ask for those. You're good with those. So they, the ones that we had to, Ms. Bridget did a great job of working that system for us.
So if we, if they don't change the law, was this something we have to do every year?
Yes.
We have to ask for an exemption?
I do.
Okay.
And we're doing these so early. I'll come back and ask for authority later on for the others because we can open those in December like always. But I have to do these earlier because I have to go back with my recommendations and get approval before we can award them.
That's right. Two-step process.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bridget. All right, Mr. Harrison.
All right. Request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct a copper telephone cable utility along and across Yellow and Wade Patrick Road.
Motion to approve by myself, 2nd by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. B, please.
Request approval for utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct a fiber optic cable route utility along and across Holly Bush Road, Homer Drive, Blackstone Circle, Reservoir East subdivision to be installed between Holly Bush Road and Cedar, Red Cedar Drive.
The move. Motion, Mr. Gaines, 2nd, by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion?
Yeah, let me say one thing real quick, just on AT&amp;T, not necessarily on this one right here. I got a call last night from a guy in River Chase. Tried to give him Jay's number three times, but it kept going through, wouldn't go through. So I spoke to the guy, but the problem was AT&amp;T had come in, this is a good example of what you're talking about, and they had nicked some lines on underground power from energy, and they'd cut off some threads to it, or levels to it, or whatever, legs to it, and power gone out four of our homes. Energy comes out, they've got AT&amp;T now denying that they nicked anything because they've up and moved and they're out again. So here we go down the same circus again. Energy's having to go through this same problem we discussed last board meeting. So I'm saying that just to say it in regards to AT&amp;T. They're saying they don't even know what happened, but you know, AT&amp;T put theirs box right on top of where energy's underground wires are. So here we go down the same road again.
Are they asking the homeowner for anything?
Not yet. Energy's basically come in and put a temporary fix for right now, but they've got to come in and re-dig, tear back up, relay all that stuff because several of the legs have been cut on the energy side of everything. AT&amp;T's saying I don't know anything about it, obviously. It wasn't that. Same situation that we've had multiple times. So again, it goes back to the discussion of the contract wording that you were discussing last time. So nothing to do with the issue here. I just, when AT&amp;T came up, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
The whole thing is that they don't want to use the utility right of way that specifies where they go, and they just...
They're happy to use the state mandated franchise agreement that gives them carte blanche access to public right-of-way so that they don't have to secure their own right-of-way. That's the whole purpose of that.
Yeah, and the weird part about this was, when they nicked those legs, this was weeks or so later that it comes down, that power starts going out. They're gone again.
It gets wet. It cuts a little insulation, and it takes a while for the moisture to...
So once it seeps through, you've got fragments of it going out on different homes. So AT&amp;T's done packed up their bags and moved it. Same thing when they hit the sewer line in Castle Woods, they're up and out at this point, and then they come back and say, I don't even remember us being over here. You know, but...
Yep. All right, yeah, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. C.
Request approval for utility permit for Bay Springs Telephone Company Inc. to construct fiber optic telecommunication utility along and across Whale Hill and Woodrow Martin to be installed between Highway 43, Diamond D Lake Road contingency upon request of current permit application. What that is, is they filled out the old form. They're supposed to be resubmitting us to the new, on our new form.
Motion by myself, 2nd, Mr. Cross. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We just got through, they spent a lot of money on Woodrow Martin. I mean, I know we got the application, permit and stuff, but they've cut, or they gonna bore?
Bore.
Both?
Cut in, they gonna cut in, bore?
No, they just gonna bore.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But they will be doing some trenching probably on the side roads, Mr. Bob, you know.
Well, I mean, we...
I just keep an eye on them, and that's why we wanted to get them on the new permit. They sent the old one in, so we're gonna hold this until they get it on the new thing with our 24-hour notice where we can start watching and proceeding over these things.
Fair enough. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to have one item, the Holly Bush Road improvements. I'm recommending approval of parcel paper request number three in the amount of $166,339.80 to Southern Rock LLC, and requesting authority to issue that check.
The move.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, 2nd, by Mr. Cross. I have a question. Where are we, where is this in the stage of construction? I drove down it yesterday, you know, and it seems like for these big checks we keep writing to Southern Rock, I just not seeing a whole lot of correlation between the money and the improvements.
Yes, sir. That's the case sometimes, but I can assure you that if those weren't being correlated, I wouldn't be standing up there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Bags.
Yes. They've put in some big boxes, and that's taken the majority of the time, and you can't, when you drive by it, you don't see it.
You don't see a lot of the progress.
That's probably the biggest thing.
Okay. Fair enough. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Richard Slay.
Good morning, sir. We've got public hearings to set. Items A, B, C, D, E, and F are all public hearings, the setting of public hearings for the 30th of August at 9:00.
Yeah, they're all District 1.
Yes, sir.
And I think since it's all District 1, you should bring lunch.
And so I would, I would offer that we would take items A through F as a single motion with the chairman's permission.
I make a motion to set these public hearings.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, 2nd, by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries.
We move yours to the bottom.
And item G, Mr. President, is our, this is our section on our public hearings for any tax protests that are being levied, and so we will open a public hearing on item G, which is the Siemens Corporation parcel, D7N-10 and D7P-1. And we would, that hearing is now open, and I'll ask if there's anyone here from Siemens Corporation on behalf of Siemens Corporation to speak on the matter of the tax protest. You may come forward.
Welcome. Yeah, please state your name, please, and...
My name's Greg Bergdell. I'm with DMA, and we represent Siemens Corporation. So I'll go ahead and, I think you all have seen this before, but... I'll pass this out. I'm not going to go through this whole thing.
Man, thank you.
I'm going to free mind your mind.
It's Jay. We...
Man, that is a book. That is a book.
Read that over there, right, please.
So just background on the situation. The Siemens plant in Richland was originally appealed in 2014, and this is an appraisal we got from Joe Parker, who's an MAI out of Flowood, and it concluded on a value of about 5.7 million. The current value's 10.3 million. It's kind of been tied up since 2014. So I could go through this appraisal, but it's kind of, and it may even come to trial later this year, so...
I hope so.
Right. So how the tax protest works, the protester has the opportunity to provide whatever documentation they wish to submit. You have an appraisal report that's been submitted, so we'll let the record reflect that we are receiving the Siemens appraisal reports with respect to value of the parcels. At this time, they're free to discuss with you guys anything they wish to about the appraisal report. I don't know if it's necessary. We've gone through this drill before. Previously, the board has simply received the appraisal report and let it stand on its own. We've given John an opportunity as tax assessor to tell you what his estimation of value is, and the board then has, at that point, a decision to make to either accept the tax assessor's recommendation with respect to value or to consider the additional information. So it's really up to...
Greg, do you have anything else you want to add to your comments?
No, I mean, just want you to consider the appraisal. There has been ongoing discussions yearly to try to get this settled out, but it really hasn't met in the middle yet, so to say.
I make a motion to accept the tax assessor's view of the value of the property.
We got to close it first.
Say pardon.
Oh, nevermind. Don't we have to close the hearing?
Well, I would like to close it, but I didn't want to...
Go ahead. We'll let you do that, Mr. Slay.
Okay. I do have, I have one question. I don't know if the gentleman knows, but I would like to ask one particular question that I think may have some relevance. Do you know what your client's insurance coverage for the properties that are subject to your appraisal, do you know what the amount of the insurance coverage is?
I do not. I mean, typically, we don't consider the insurance value in an appraisal approach because it can take in, you know, it accounts for demolishing the property, rebuilding it brand-new and things like that.
You didn't do this appraisal. This is an outside...
No, sir.
Okay, so you're not the appraiser.
Yeah, we definitely get a third-party appraisal.
The only reason I ask about the insurance coverage is it seems to me that it indicates what the, what the actual owner of the property's intention with respect to value would be. I mean, it's an indicator of value. I just thought that was interesting. Certainly would be something that you guys can consider. You don't have to just consider the appraisal report. You can consider other facts and circumstances that may be a part of that equation. To me, it seems like an interesting fact. If you found out that they think the value's 5 million, roughly 5 million, but it's insured for 12 million, would that make a difference to you, what they think, what you think they think the value is? It would to me. So...
Obviously, yes. Obviously.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to accept the tax assessor's, 2nd, by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock, sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg. We appreciate it.
Okay.
For the record, that hearing is closed.
I'm sorry. It still wouldn't let you do it. All right, next, Mr. Slay, Cole, do Cole View Portfolio, the 2nd.
Let's see here. Yes, item H is the, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Cole View Portfolio 2 LLC, parcel D8H-29. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of Cole View Portfolio 2, anyone to speak on behalf of this protester. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on Cole View Portfolio Two. John, do you have anything to add on that one?
I'll make a motion. We accept the tax assessor's view of the value of the property.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item H is the Brandon M O B Investors LLC's parcel, parcel H eleven dash fifty dash seventy. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of Brandon M O B Investors LLC. Anyone to speak on that matter? Okay. Anyone here to speak on that matter? We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on that one.
John, do you have anything to add on that? Mr. Sullivan's values, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Jay, please.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. President, I just want to point out that these are applicants, these are tax protesters that indicated a desire to appear before the board and to speak in public hearing about their particular protest. So that's why we're doing this. It, it was an indication that they intended to be here. Item J is the Applied Industrial Technologies, parcel D seven J dash thirteen dash sixty. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of Applied Industrial Technologies. Anyone to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. I'll ask John if he has anything to add on that. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion. We approve or accept Mr. Sullivan's value of that property. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. K, please.
Item K is the Yogi Flowood LLC. This is parcel G eleven dash eight dash fifty-two. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the Yogi Flowood LLC matter. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion. We accept Mr. Sullivan's value on that property.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. L, please.
Item L, this is an acknowledgement and acceptance of our official survey plat that depicts certain coordinates. I'm not going to go through all this. It's, what we were trying to do is to tie down forever and always, we hope, where the Smith County line is on Woodrow Martin Road. It was a discrepancy between the counties with respect to who felt like they had an maintenance obligation, and you had it, you ended up with a gap.
Well, we just did the overlay, didn't we?
This is officially taking the road in, that part. We went, the survey has been done by Smith County, and we confirmed it with our people that they, they were correct in the fact that we were supposed to be taking an additional two hundred feet of road.
That we didn't do?
That we did, that, that prior, Mr. Martin, who was the prior supervisor years and years ago, he stopped at his fence corner, and that's where he quit working on the road. And it was just assumed that that's where it was. And so, long story short, I got called by the supervisor on that side of the, of the line, and he made that suggestion. I said, show me what you got. And he showed Tim and them, and Tim went out and confirmed it, and they researched it. And showing up, he's right.
So does that mean we're going to have to?
We've already done it. We've already changed out the pipe. That's what kind of moved the process along. He was getting, that supervisor was getting ready to work that road, and that's what brought it to a head. So we've already changed out the pipe in that road, and we get, because this happened right about the time we let the bed go on Woodrow Martin, far as the, the state, state aid project. And I was hoping to go ahead and get it done with that, but we just could not be quick enough. But Mike has got the pipe changed out, and we'll work to get that overlay, that little stretch overlay at some point when ad caps back down in that area.
So we now know where the county line is officially, and that's what, that's all this does. It just documents it for our purposes so that there's no confusion.
We had a summer situation in Rankin and Simpson.
County, county line road.
Just a general question. This is real with Jessica and Jay. When y'all go search the minutes for something like, somebody asks the question, do we have enough wordage in this motion that you'll find it?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll find it? Okay. It's kind of a little vague, you know, far specifically what we're, you know, trying to do here, but I was just curious. All right, I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Certain, Bob, certain things we ID cannot be according exactly to this language, but we do it according to how we can pull it back up.
Okay.
Did he criticize my language?
Actually.
We good. Yeah, he did. I didn't. That's why I had to ask. Yep, all right. Item M, Mr. President, is a discussion of beaver control activities in Rankin County. This really, this discussion, but it's really more for a point of clarification, just to make sure that we're not confused on a particular point about beaver control. You guys, mid-year, you authorize us to go into contract with the U.S. Department of Agriculture through its AFIS program to utilize one of their employees for the purpose of, of beaver control. And we use that where the issue is off public right-of-way, it's on private property. USDA has the jurisdiction to effectively control those activities, whereas the county would not. There may be some confusion over the fact that we don't always have to use USDA to conduct beaver control activities. We just have to do that when it's private property that is being impacted. If there is a public road or road right-of-way that is being impacted by beaver control, we have the authority to utilize anybody that we want. That's because it's a service. We can utilize anybody to conduct that, and they can be paid by the county, all right? So if it's private, it's got to be USDA. If it's public, it can be whoever, all right? And I just wanted to make that clarified. We need to be careful to make sure that we are only utilizing someone other than USDA where we can clearly connect it to public purposes.
So clarified.
Yes. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, you could have just left that out.
Okay.
All right, move it on.
Okay. We'll go on. Next item, item N, consideration of an, of abhorrent exemption for new construction and expansion of existing facilities at Habe USA. We tabled this one last board meeting. This is a facility that is in the city of Richland. They did not submit a request for an exemption to the city of Richland. They only submitted a request to the county. Rankin First has confirmed, and we have confirmed, that it is in fact inside the city of Richland, and that there was no application made to the city of Richland for an exemption. I'm given to understand from the mayor that if they want to submit an application for exemption, that Richland would at least consider it. But at, at any rate, they appear to qualify for the exemption on the basis of the work that's been done by Rankin First to confirm this. They have added square footage. They have added new jobs. Rankin First, it has requested that the board give it serious consideration and would like to see them get the exemption. And so I've got it back before you now. There's no reason for us not to act on it. We pulled it off to get some clarification about where they were located.
What is, what is the place? What is it? Do you know, John?
I don't know.
They manufacture the little boxes of transformers go in.
I'm trying to think where they are.
I don't know where they, they used to be located in Pearl. They moved from Pearl to Richland. But that's what they were, but they manufactured.
On the old one? Okay.
They don't have to make an exemption request to the city. They, they can, but they, they don't have to. They've made the request to the county, and Rankin First, of course, has gone through it and blessed it. So it's, it's back in front of you. Y'all can make your decision.
Motion to approve.
That's what I'm thinking. If you got a question.
I can.
Oh. What's the major things that would make them eligible for an exemption? I mean, just sure.
Investment, the, the amount of investment in the expansion and the construction of the new facilities, the additional investment in facilities that will result in job expansion. Those are the major considerations.
Certain number of jobs they have to say they're going to create, you know, as a result of that expansion. And then that's where Rankin First comes in to verify.
I mean, it's a, it's a backdoor TIF. How, uh...
They said we're giving up everything.
How long they been there?
On a TIF, we only give up.
Fifty percent, yeah.
How long have they been there?
I, I don't know that, Jared. I'm sorry. I, I don't have any information.
Absolutely.
They've been, they've been there long enough to have constructed new facilities there.
That's the old industrial one behind, uh, that about Central Bike and all that way? Hmm. Yeah.
John, do you have the authority to negotiate for us? I mean, this is zero. They're paying, this is asking for total exemption.
Be careful of the track you go down, because we've already approved other people, have we not, for something very similar to what they do. So you open that door. I'm not saying it's not good to open that door, but you going to start, we've already approved those.
I think we, yeah, we also look at them and I just...
Well, these exemptions are up to ten years, and you can do them for any amount you want to. You don't have to do ten. It's up to.
But... Raven, I spoke about this. We're thinking that the counties should have gotten the policy because any of the...
Coming up and asking, and there are other counties that have parameters for, it has to create at least a hundred and fifty jobs or the, the expansion has to be over so many million. And I think that would be very beneficial because it would, it would set parameters. And I think the county as well should have a policy, but they need to work with all the municipalities and get the mayor and board of aldermen on them to where we're not bombarded by all these exemptions. Because, I mean, if it's out there, and y'all have the authority, if, if it's granted for ten years, you don't have to grant it for ten years. You can say two years, and we'll come back and revisit that.
Yeah, I like that.
Now, in the past, we've always granted, if it said ten years, we've granted ten years. I think now we're at a point that Rankin County, as we know, is the best place to live, and people are coming here because it's Rankin County, that we need some parameters. And, and Craig agreed, and I think the municipalities, as far as the, the mayor of Richland agrees that, and the Pearl agrees, that we need to have some form of parameters to where, this isn't coming before y'all. We, we can eliminate it, and we have Rankin First out there that will have parameters when they're getting business coming in. They say if you meet these parameters, we'll be glad to entertain that. We're not going to guarantee you're going to receive the ten years, but we may do it for two.
Well, currently, what guidelines do they go by? Is it state recommendations that they use?
There'll be statutes on what you can do as far as manufacturing, distribution, expansion, jobs. All that's on statute to whether they qualify for that or not.
Right.
But you can set the parameters to what qualify for the exemption in Rankin County.
I got a dumb question.
It's kind of like the other thing over there, you know, with GI associates. They, they missed the opportunity for get their application in. And I think that was in state statute. That was a law that was passed.
They had to have a certificate in twenty-fourteen.
For the ten-year exemption, but...
Well, that was it, right. But if you just move from one building to another and add on, so they're asking for exemption of everything, including they're just moving?
I, I think they would be qualified, asking for the additional.
Okay, so this is just the additional portion, not the whole building.
Not the existing facility, what they've constructed, that ten thousand square feet, hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah.
That part, which creates a big burden on John's office, but nonetheless, you know, I think he's right. But I think it behooves us to sit down with cities too before we just arbitrarily strike a pin to it and say this is what we're going to do. Because most of these properties are inside a city.
You, you'll have exemptions to where they qualify for, and, and they'll be exempt on new equipment, like a two or three hundred dollar computer. Well, it's going to become obsolete in two to three years, but they have a ten-year exemption on that. So we'd like to put like equipment over a value of twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars. It's not going to become obsolete in ten years. And i- if it is computer equipment, servers or things of that nature, you put, we're not going to give you the ten years. We're going to give you two on that specific server.
The life shelf is...
Well, don't, isn't there something that we already go by that, I know we did, something to do with daycares?
We have.
Well, I think, I know we did it on daycare. They were over a certain dollar figure, and they got some kind of exemption. And that was through Rankin First came through.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I know that you guys...
Assisted living home, maybe.
Yeah, probably assisted living.
I don't think we've ever done a daycare.
No, it's, well, assisted living, kind of like soup stuff daycare.
Oh.
You guys, you guys have a TIF policy?
Yeah.
So what John is talking about would be similar to the TIF policy that was adopted. And I want to say that that goes all the way back to oh eight, if I recall correctly. Your TIF policies is, in my opinion, is very strong, and it has kept us from having to deal with requests for TIFs.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, but, yeah, of course, you know, we always are going to keep that little safety valve in whatever policy we create, and the TIF policy was no exception to that. But nonetheless, so we, we know how to do policies that establish minimums or floors. And we would not be recreating the wheel. John, I've already looked at some established policies from other jurisdictions that make a lot of sense.
So in, in this situation, though, I mean, we don't really have a lot of choice, do we?
Yes.
You have complete discretion.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, since we've done others that, but this, this comes from Rankin First?
Yes, this comes from Rankin First with a request that it be granted.
I've never seen them not want, wants to grant one, though.
The way this reads, it's both facilities, not just the new.
No, it's, it's actually the, an exemption for new construction and for the expansion of an existing. That's two different things, Steve. They expanded an existing, and so the part of the, the existing that is the expansion would be eligible, not the whole thing, just the part that expanded, plus the new facility that they built. It's two different things.
But that expansion could have been pretty big.
But I mean, is it, is it creating that many more jobs?
I, I don't know. If y'all want me to, to ask for more information.
Typically, it's like a minimum of ten?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that the minimum is more in the neighborhood of around twenty-five.
That's what it could be. There is a minimal number of jobs and investment, like a million dollars, or it's not just, you go out there and spread with ten, buy ten to it, you know.
Well, we've not, well, that's what I'm checking because I don't know what the dollar value was.
Well, I mean, we need to act, we need to act before the assessment roll.
Well, it's our last week, man.
Heads to the Department of Revenue.
Well, we got one more.
Yeah.
We have one more.
If y'all will do this, we, we've got a pretty healthy executive session. I hate to tell you that, but we do. So my suggestion would be, let me see if I can get Regina at Rankin First to give me a little more clarification about the number of jobs. What else do y'all want to know while I'm asking?
Amount of investment.
The amount of investment.
Proximate investment amount, okay?
That'd be the due investment.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get those two things clarified, and if we can, we'll just move it to the heel of the time.
I mean, I know we can, but how does this sound if, when we look at it, if it's a positive, and we put a parameter of two years or three years or four years, between now and that period, adopt some guidelines or policy, and then when they come back through, we'll see if they fit them.
You know, I would suggest, Steve, if y'all are seriously considering putting a policy in place, then I would suggest that we give them a one-year exemption and, and essentially put them back on the clock and, and force them to then meet the, the new policy parameters for any continued...
I mean, there's no difference really in the TIFs in this, other than one is right out of the ground and the other has been here.
All right, so well, you want to go, do y'all want to go ahead and entertain, give the exemption for one year, and then let's come back and then reapply when we have a policy in place?
I'd say, yeah, because we're going to be pushed, and what we're going to do is just cause a lot of people to do a lot of work that we're going to, we can take care of.
All right, so you're going to get, we're giving you some marching orders too, Mr. Slade, as getting with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Rhodes, they both, and I'm sure Brandon has a little bit of industrial, but those two other mayors, for sure, they have the biggest imprint, impact on industrial properties to have some say into what we come up with. And what, next week, you have something to go?
No, it's just kidding.
Well, by, by the mark, too much?
We could have everything together by the next fiscal year that to give a policy before the exemptions will be applied for, for next year.
We just don't want to just get to the side we got.
Probably the best way would give us plenty of time. It'd get all the cities on board. And we'll move forward from that point in establishing a policy. And all the ones before, we've, we've done as usual. We've treated everybody the same.
Yeah.
But we're at a stage now that we need to move forward and, and have something in place for...
Next year's.
All right. So the motion on the table of the floor is to add, give this folks an exemption for one year. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, Mr. Slade. All right, Ms. Oster, you've got thirty seconds. If we have a hefty executive session.
Well, we're, we're, we're two quarts low on our executive session, so take your time.
I got a question to ask John, though. John, because I know something else is coming up. The old Taylor Power Building, they're renovating, well, they're renovating a brand-new building that's never used. And I think one of the equipment companies is moving over there. How will that work as far as this, this type of, what we're just going through right here?
Well, it has to be jobs too, doesn't it?
Depending on our policy that we adopt, they'll either qualify or they won't qualify.
Yeah. They're kind of, they're kind of expanding but relocating in a way across the street, I think. Yeah.
I think it gets back to that threshold of capital investment, that you got to demonstrate you're going to put on that number of employees to you.
And then also the police tower, I mean, we granted exemption, but I don't know of any exemption that we've ever granted that we didn't go out and make sure that they, they hired a hundred and twenty-five new employees.
I see. So who checks that?
And, and Craig, I have to answer that. I don't know who polices that. And then I, I know, I know I have never gone out and made sure that they met the criteria.
Yeah.
But I think that's something that may need to be put in, to where...
Janice can do it.
You have to, I hate to say you have to prove that you're doing what you say you're doing, but I, I mean...
You have to maintain that, or you're going to lose your...
Rather than put the burden on us, we could put it...
We can discuss it later. I just, I just thought about that Taylor Power.
We can have Dwayne Jones do it. He doesn't have much going on.
Let me say this.
We can let Rankin First.
Well, that's, that's what needs to happen. It needs to be Rankin First, that whether they agree with that or not, I'll let them speak on that issue. But a lot of these exemptions are also going to be duly before you on the recommendation of M D A as well. And where M D A is involved, I know for a fact that there are mechanisms in place to verify that they meet requirements. Wherever M D A is involved. So if you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five job deal, probably M D A is going to be in that.
Well, if they don't, that's immediately grounds for...
And it is.
And we can back tax three years.
And you can go right now and look at the new state auditor's report that came out day before yesterday. And you can go right now and look at, uh, the new state auditor's report that came out day before yesterday, where he has listed what are called exceptions, uh, where he has gone back in and, and in addition to embezzlement and theft and all those kinds of things, he's listed several situations where companies have qualified for loan assistance through MDA and they did not meet the job requirements.
Right.
And they are being told, "You will repay all of that money." Now, whether we get it back or not, I don't know, but I'm, I'm telling you, there are mechanisms in place. The state auditor is actually taking that and pursuing recoveries against companies that failed to meet the requirements to, uh, qualify for exemptions or loans or anything else.
I'm sure there's a lot of that going on.
And adopted policy.
All right, Ms. Oster.
Thank you. The first item I have is authority to advertise the notice of tax increase in public hearing for September fourth, two thousand eighteen, at nine AM on the proposed FY nineteen budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Wait, we just need those.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Would you, would you read that one more time, just so I can hear it again?
Authority to advertise notice of tax increase in public hearing for September fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Tell me the tax increase, just.
There is no tax increase. The state statute sets out the way that we have to title it.
I, I just wanted to hear you say it.
Okay.
That's right.
I already had one phone call from.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
A, a gentleman that asked us.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
Authority to.
Why is that, though, really? Because a lot of them come out, uh, you see in the paper, comes out with no increase.
We, we have argued that for years, why we have to title it that way. In the body of it, it says, "There is no tax increase for this year. However, you would pay more in your taxes if your house has been appraised more, you know, during the year, if you've added anything." But we stated in the body, but the title has to, it is very misleading.
Create phone calls.
It does.
And questions.
I've already had one.
Oh, I'll get it.
Just by the agenda that somebody read online.
The word increase, the only way they like the word increase is in a check.
Well, several times we've had it based on the school board has done there.
Right, we can put in the body.
But we didn't have that one time, I think.
Right, but the title has to be this way.
I just wanted to hear you say it. You read it well.
Yeah.
The next item is authority to publish notice of intent to levy taxes for Rankin First Economic Development Authority.
Most approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, see, please, ma'am.
Authority to sign order of real and personal property assessment rolls for two thousand and eighteen.
So move.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, next, ma'am.
Approval of pay application number seven to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents and authority to issue that check.
Most approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Harrison?
Uh?
Okay, motion, all in favor, say aye.
Yeah, we do.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Harrison, you got it.
I'm sorry.
Good timing, Mr. Jones, good timing.
That's not with the. Okay. All right, we're gonna have to make a modification to, um, E, um, because of what Mr. Harrison just told me. This is approval for AT&amp;T to relocate fiber line at the new Rankin County.
It's gonna be sixty?
In the amount not to exceed sixty-five.
I saw one, said sixty at one time.
Says what?
In the amount not to exceed sixty-five. We had sixty-five yesterday. We pulled an estimate, but that is what.
I was just a contractor.
That's just the contractor, so it's, it's not to exceed sixty-five.
I need a motion to make that adjustment to the agenda.
Make a motion to make that adjustment.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Your motion to approve. Motion with the cross, motion second by myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Oster.
Um, that's all under my section. I do have one thing under additional business. Um, this is the Pearl River Clean Sweep, um, that they're gonna have Saturday, September fifteenth, and then on the twenty-second. They're requesting from us, if we could, maybe at one or two locations, to put a dumpster for that day. And I had a meeting with James Hall and there are some steps that we have to do in order to keep up our, this is to do with our stormwater and to keep up our certificate and show our participation. So they're requesting maybe two locations if we can put a dumpster for just that day.
For stormwater?
For part of the.
Under our Stormwater Management Plan.
Management Plan.
Part of what we have to show is that we're doing community stuff that's related to stormwater management and cleaning trash out of.
Storm management, river streams.
We could do that all day long.
Oh, absolutely. But thi- this helps us to quantify.
Right.
For purposes of later reporting. All right, most approved.
Second.
This will be to add, first of all.
Motion to add by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross.
Is that for one or for two sites?
Two.
Wherever you go.
Okay.
How, how long?
One day.
Just one day?
There's two Saturdays, I believe.
Two different one days.
Two different one days, Saturday the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
So we're gonna move, we're gonna put them out and then pick them up and bring them back?
They will deliver.
They, they.
Yeah, I know, I just.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Most approved.
As to add it, motion to approve, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Oster, anything else?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anything else to do with additional business?
I'd like to add one quick question, just for a second, in regards to some of the work I know Mike's doing at the county site for the new road barn and stuff like that. Uh, one of the things that we discussed, and I know Mr. Word has it right now in the EOC's budget on capital outlay stuff, as far as doing some work there on that site. He's got some money, I think, in the budget that can do some work for future development and growth that's in this year's budget. I wanted to have the discussion on whether or not we want him to go ahead and do that or not do that. Discussion being, I guess, in the point of, of the future of EOC moving out that direction, land work that can help on, as well as help with Mike's stuff. If it can be done, it can be done now. If not, do not worry about it and just roll back into the fund side of it. It's in the neighborhood of probably seventy thousand dollars at some point, uh, in a couple funds.
Something needs to be done now?
Uh, is this where they might join the end and they could go ahead and do the pad?
Right, to get that all fixed and set up. Mike, you can probably explain a little bit.
We're not gonna be doing pad now, though.
Yes, mostly where we've cleared some land, where we thought we was gonna be able to get some dirt from. But we need to fill in where our old pond we've cleaned up. Actually, that's the side and kind of make our cul-de-sac and everything blend together because it's a pretty good fall off. I mean, we can move some dirt over there and get the site kind of prepped and ready, uh, for future development.
And then EOC can be ten years down the line at some point. But he's got money right now that can help out in this whole site.
Would it be, would it be better to use it there or is it, would it be better for him to use it somewhere else?
It's all our same money, so I don't, I don't really see the need in doing it just because, I mean, we're gonna do whatever we need to do to take care of it. And, I mean, it's all, it's all really coming out of the same pot.
Well, if he's gonna, but if you say about the cul-de-sac too, we've got to do some, we're gonna do some work on the cul-de-sac.
We're gonna do some, it'd be, it'd be in conjunction with me and, and like, you know, with our future site, everything.
So is there no way we can get around this AT&amp;T thing? Do we have to dig it up? We couldn't just go real?
If you want fifteen-foot hill in front of the building, that's what you got. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's about the only way you could set up on the property, you know? Because, I mean, that's the reason they stopped.
You got a site, so it wouldn't be that bad.
I mean, well, they stopped the road. When they stopped the road, that's what the difference is between the end of the road and, and the top of this, top of the ground is fifteen foot. When they got to that AT&amp;T, they just, that's where they dogged road it. And then everything else just fell off on the other side, so, I mean.
Right.
It's costly, wouldn't want, but, you know.
Anything else for additional business?
Yeah, the only thing I was mentioning on that was I'm just trying to Band-Aid Mike's budget at point because he's bleeding pretty good. But if it doesn't matter, it's all come out of the same spot, then just drive on, driver, move it out.
I think, I think we've got some more time to make some adjustments to the budget to kind of, that way before we, at the end of the year out.
We were talking about adding, uh, we don't get involved yet.
All right, anything else for additional business? I'll entertain a, a discussion of going into executive session for. Not everybody here yet? Nobody ever here yet for our executive session? Sheriff? You missed the first, uh, public comment, was from the gentleman down at, uh, Sanctuary Homero Association.
Bluebird.
He wants to put a stop sign there at Bluebird and Sanctuary Drive, a three-way stop with some rubber stripping in the road too. And he said he talked to some folks in your group that said that was a good idea and that we did all that, that you.
Yeah.
Get some deckies out there and kind of monitor a little bit closer, make sure they're not running on the spot.
And vote for something like this? This is me saying, "Oh, yeah, I'm good with going in."
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hey, guys, hey, guys. Jay, y'all have a second? What now?
They, they probably at the Homero, never watch a Homero association.
Homero Association, yeah, the association.
Thirty-six people signed the petition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, but, uh.
It's not gonna do it.
We've tried them everywhere else and it hadn't, it hasn't done anything.
When they complained, they were sending deckies out there and saturating, like some tickets.
And, and the.
And usually the, the first one he started by ticket to is one thousand.
I, I just wanted to point something out. The, the request before the board this morning was for both a stop sign, a three-way stop sign, and for rumble strips. And that is not what is on the petition. It's only requesting stop signs. The only reason I point that out is that rumble strips, how they work is effectively through noise. And that means it will be noise, uh, and an excessive amount of noise for the people who live right in close proximity to that stop sign.
I wouldn't do that.
Uh, and my, well, and uneducated, uh, non-engineering, I'm quick to point out, uh, what, what the scholarship suggests about stop signs, uh, in, in areas like this that are generally not designed for traffic control. We don't have a traffic problem at Sanctuary and Bluebird. There's, there are not, uh, traffic jams. So this would be, and you heard it, front and center, right here, from the mouth of the person representing the HOA. It's for what?
Speed control.
Speed control, which is a no-no. Under the manual and uniform traffic control devices, very clearly says, "Ye shall not ye use stop signs for speed control." The reason being that people adjust themselves to the presence of the, of the stop sign where it is not for traffic control and only speed control. And what you'll find is that they will pick up speed approaching, stop the stop sign and drive away faster than they would have been over the entire distance of that, uh, assessment. They will actually be at an increased rate of speed with the presence of the stop sign. It sounds counterintuitive. It doesn't, it's politically, it's unpalatable to point that out to people. I get all that. I just want you to understand that a simple request for a stop sign that is for speed control generally is a bad idea. Um, and, and it will not be effective long-term. It's politically effective, but it's not actually factually effective to, to control speed. Just want to point that out. And the, the noise level will actually increase simply by virtue of the fact that they are accelerating away from the stop sign. That is going to increase traffic noise for those that are in the immediate proximity. One of the reasons why we wanted this, uh, front and center before we decided to do anything is to get all of those folks, as many as we could, on record saying we want it. And so they've asked for it, uh, and now it's, it's really up to your discretion as to whether or not you give them what they've asked for, but I wanted it on the record that, uh, that the request, as I appreciate it, if we didn't have this in front of us, requested by what appears to me to be a majority of the residents out there, then I would recommend that you not do it with them on the record saying they want it. I'm kind of ambivalent about it.
I don't think, I'm not, I, I don't think they really would want the rumble strips, once they got the people living right there.
Recommend not allowing that.
Mm-hmm. We put them on some roads, but, man, they make some zipping noise.
Is that something we have to vote on?
No, it's not. You can just instruct the road manager to go install the stop signs. It's not really anything that requires board action. It's such, it's totally subject to your discretion and to your authority as to whether or not it happens.
Is this all the people that live there, thirty-six?
Uh.
The Sanctuary is not that big.
That's a, that's a majority of the folks out there, Jared.
Mr. Morrison, Mr. Harrison, I'm sorry, would you please put up three-way stop signs?
And no.
Don't hold off on rumble strips right now because, you know, and educate them about the noise and we may revisit that at a later date. Kind of tell them about the rumble strips and the noise they make. It needs to fall those, like, in that immediate area. Appreciate about the noise.